I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Commission Secretary note that all members are present except for Commissioner Williams? With that, I will take a motion or discussion on last month's meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Public comments. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the Commission on anything that is not otherwise on the agenda? Now is your opportunity. Please fill out a speaker card. If not, if you're here for a case, I would also ask that you fill out one of the cards and get them to our Commission Secretary so I can recognize you when that time comes. Okay, moving on. Disclosure of ex parte communications.
Mr. Chairman, I had a representative from Centerra contact me, but I felt that I had enough information, so I didn't take the meeting.
Same.
Same.
I also exchanged some emails with Mr. Sumner, and they were just brief emails, so we didn't meet or exchange any information, so. All right, on to old business. Case number 11-350-00001, is my understanding that the applicant has requested that this case be continued until next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That is the AT&amp;T special use permit on Estrella Parkway. So if any members of the public are here for that. All right. You know, I don't know that we need a presentation if we're going to continue, and it looks like they're going to redesign the site plan anyway that appears. So I don't know if you want to add anything else, Steve?
Yeah, well, not the details, just that they've been meeting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commission members, the applicant and Pete Tyke with Newland, they did have a meeting last Thursday evening. They invited the residents of Estrella to the meeting. And at the meeting, Pete and applicant went over the plans and what they were proposing. About fifteen residents were in attendance, and it was my impression that you had some residents who were, who'd have liked maybe a different location, and then some residents who just maybe had an aesthetic concern. As the meeting went on, it looked like the applicant said that there were things they could do to the enclosure, undulate the walls, maybe add some variation to the planes to make it look more like the Star Tower. They could add additional desert landscaping around the enclosure. They could also move an electrical box that they had proposed by the sidewalk a little farther back. It looked like some of those measures, the residents found that favorable. It's my impression that the applicant is still working with Newland and the residents and thus this request for this additional time to see if they can meet all the concerns. Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Steve, and we will look forward to seeing the revised plan next month. With that said, if there's no other, is there anyone from the public who wishes to say anything about this? Any Commission comments or discussion? With that, then I will close the public hearing and request Commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue case 11-350-00001 until the September meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from the Vice Chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. You have recommended that case be moved till next month. Moving on to case number 09-200-0001 and case number, oh, I'll just do, you can do both at the same time, but we'll take separate action.
Please.
And I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself having worked on this case previously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we kind of went through the details on this case last time, I'll just speak to some of the issues. As you mentioned, it is a PAD amendment, and it's to allow 340 multifamily units along with the standard commercial units on this property of Van Buren in Estrella. The request to amend the PAD is in keeping with surrounding development, the general plan, and the city-centered gateway overlay district. The overall architectural style is clean and contemporary southwest, and the design of the commercial buildings and the residential buildings are not identical, yet they are connected through the use of complementary materials and colors. During staff review, the police department voiced concerns over the placement of the garages along the used property line here. The placement limits the ability of the department to see behind the garages and into the landscape buffer area. To address the concerns, a stipulation has been recommended that would require that the garage buildings be staggered so that covered parking spaces and uncovered parking spaces be located between those buildings, allowing for some views into the buffer. The applicant requested a drive-through bank on pad four, which is this one here, to be allowed by right through approval of the PAD amendment. The design and layout of the drive-through bank does meet the review criteria of a use permit, so staff had no objection to this request. We are, however, recommending a stipulation that a drive-through bank on any other pad would be required to go through the use permit process and come back before you and council, as would any other convenience use. Jim McLaughlin, a resident of Centerra, attended the citizen review meeting for this case and also spoke to you at your July 20th meeting. Mr. McLaughlin is not in favor of the multifamily development, and he believes it will have a negative impact on the surrounding community. He cited views into the single-family neighborhood, reduced water pressure, increased traffic and noise, and the elimination of the Centerra Drive median landscaping. Mr. McLaughlin is here this evening, along with, I would assume, other residents from Centerra, and I believe they wish to speak to you again tonight. Staff believes that the concerns could be addressed through the recommended stipulations of approval pertaining to landscape buffer, the traffic calming, building heights and setbacks, and through further refinement of the project during the site plan review process. Everything that will be developed on this site will have to go through the site plan review process with staff. Staff is recommending approval of the PAD amendment and the design guidelines, subject to 21 stipulations. As you may recall, at the last meeting, the applicant had requested one amendment to a stipulation regarding the stairways to the apartment buildings, asking that they be concealed or screened rather than concealed. Staff had used the word concealed. They asked for screen. We were okay with that. I believe you were as well. We also, since the last meeting, took out a stipulation related to the Estrella Parkway sewer. We had thought that perhaps the flows from this development would create or exacerbate a bottleneck at the Estrella Parkway sewer line. We've since determined that the flows from this development will go to Bullard, so that's no longer an issue. So that's how we got down to 21 stipulations. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
Was there another community meeting or since our last?
No, we did not have one.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Karen.
And the applicant is here as well.
I imagine that Mr. Sumner would like to come up and give a presentation, if not for our benefit, but for the benefit of Commissioner Short.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, members of the Council Commission. Glad to be here again and to see all of you. What I would like to do is I have some additional materials that we have sent over to staff since the last commission, so I would like to go ahead and hand those out to you now so you can have them for reference. During my presentation, I'll also give a copy to the clerk for the record. We've done some additional architectural renderings that we are ongoing as we continue to provide more detail to staff. We also commissioned a market study. There was a lot of discussion last time about the market conditions on the site and multifamily and whether, how viable that is. We hired a market research company to go out there and survey the housing market as well as the commercial real estate market, so I'll go ahead and hand those out to you now for reference.
If you wouldn't mind giving them to the clerk, and then she can hand those out to us.
Well, the clerk is passing those out. I'd just like to thank staff again for all their hard work on the project. It's been ongoing for quite a while and gone through some changes, and I'd just like to thank Joe and Karen and all the staff for all their hard work on this project. As you're aware, the request tonight is to incorporate multifamily residential uses into the PAD for Centerra Crossings. Our goal here is to provide an enhanced mixed-use environment into this location, which will further support the vibrancy of the city center. It'll support additional retail and recreation within the area. It'll provide additional housing options and a lock-and-leave lifestyle for the residents of this highly amenitized residential community that will be integrated with the adjacent retail uses. And we also want to touch bases on the conditions of the multifamily market because that was brought up. There were quite a few questions last hearing regarding the status of the multifamily market conditions. I'd also like to go into a little bit of detail regarding the conformance to the city center overlay plan, the gateway overlay. And also just to reiterate our close work with staff and the neighbors to try and mitigate and accommodate some of their concerns, and we, I'll go into a little bit more detail about that as well. Just to emphasize, regarding the city center gateway overlay, I'd like to distinguish that we are in the gateway overlay area, which, as you know, is along Estrella Parkway as it approaches the city center. So there's, we have the city center core and then the city center gateway overlay. There was a little bit of discussion last time regarding the ability to do vertical integrated mixed use at this location relative to the city center location. And while we agree that that is a very dynamic type of mixed-use development, at this particular location, we feel it's going to be much more viable to see that occur first, to actually go vertical integration on those mixed uses at the city center core. And, you know, there's quite a bit of acreage in that location, and we would like to see it be commercially successful in that location and around the core and around the ballpark. And over time, we do feel that there may be, as the project evolves and the corridor evolves, there may be opportunities to do vertical integrated mixed use. But as we know, a lot of these areas, you know, Site Mill Avenue as an example, they happen over time, and they grow organically with time, and the projects evolve, and we definitely feel this is going to take some time before we can actually go do vertical integrated mixed use at this location. Not to mention, there's quite a bit of separation from the, there's about a mile separation from this corner to the city center. So with single-family residences in between, so we definitely feel that our ability to come out of the gate, be the first project in this location with vertical integrated mixed use, will be difficult to be successful at this time. But we do want to emphasize that we are meeting or exceeding all of the requirements set before us of the city ordinance and the gateway overlay district. We're emphasizing the prominent street corner. We have an over 7,000 square foot focal point at the corner plaza. We've got shade and gathering spaces and seating there. The exhibit that I passed out to you is an additional rendering that we prepared of that corner plaza for your reference. We've got, we're promoting pedestrian circulation. Because this is a mixed-use project, adding the multifamily is going to really enhance the whole dynamic of the gateway area. The residents are going to be able to walk to stores without having this additional density. The retail may not be as viable. By adding these uses, this whole corner will become more dynamic, more sustainable, and will also help reduce Goodyear's carbon footprint and create that mixed-use environment that we're trying to promote in some of these more urban areas. Another key factor that we are exceeding is the requirement to keep the buildings up on the 15-foot setback line. There's a requirement for 15 percent of the total building frontage. To be at that setback line, we're actually exceeding that by providing 25 percent of the building frontage at the setback line. So I just wanted to highlight some of those specific details and that we are meeting or exceeding all of those requirements. Just to touch bases regarding some of the comments from the last hearing, there was a question about the ability of this developer to, well, actually, the question was whether or not there was a multifamily user in tow to build the project. We initially said, well, no, there's not, but we want to reiterate that our property owner, our client, is a multifamily developer, so they have the ability to go vertical on this project. So they may sell it or they may build it themselves, and they're currently building three projects right now in California. They've got a 27-unit apartment complex that is four months out from breaking ground. They've got another 12-unit townhome project in Studio City that is in permitting phases, and they've also got a six-unit project in Burbank that is at 90 percent completion. All these projects total are approximately $18 million of construction costs, and they're all fully funded and in progress. So I just want to make a point that it's not a speculation deal here. We're not just asking for the zoning to tie it up in the hopes that someday there might be a buyer for it. If the, when the market conditions are ready, they can move forward on their own if they want to. So we just wanted to clear that up. There's a little bit of concern that it might just be a land bank type play, and that's not the case. Going into market conditions regarding the multifamily, there was a concern that multifamily's not viable, that the multifamily market cannot support another project. We hired a market research company to look into all the sectors for us and tell us, get their take on multifamily, retail, office, hotel, et cetera. Since 2009, the vacancy rates in Goodyear were about 14 percent. They are now under 8 percent, so they've almost cut in half in the last two years, and they're continuing to decline. Last, we didn't have a market study to present to you last time, so there was some speculation by some people that there might be approximately a 25 percent vacancy rate at nearby projects. We specifically asked our consultant to go survey the nearby projects. Seraphina, which is nearby, only has an 8 percent vacancy rate. It's currently 92 percent occupied. Lunera's 89 percent occupied, and Broadstone at Canyon Trails is 96 percent occupied. They're all doing extremely well, and they have all improved substantially in the last year. Rents are anticipated to increase. Vacancy rates are dropping. I think it's clear to say that as population growth continues and the vacancy rates are in decline, there's going to be demand for more housing. This project's going to take 18 to 24 months to get through all the design approvals and permitting process, so by that time, it's going to be 2013, 2014, if we go full steam ahead before there's going to be projects here in lease-up. The market's going to be substantially better by that time, and we definitely feel that multifamily's very viable. That compared with other sectors, retail, hotel, we've got all the details in there. I don't want to bore you with too many statistics, but, you know, they're not performing as well. Office in particular is having negative absorption rates, vacancy rates at our 12-year high. Hotel is quite a bit below their long-term average. Those are, I reference those two uses because those are the two uses that we modified from our last proposal to remove and replace with multifamily. We hope that the additional information we've been able to provide will help mitigate any concerns about the economic viability of the project and also help emphasize that the multifamily is absolutely viable in this location. As you're aware, we have some neighbors that, you know, Mr. McLaughlin came to last meeting. He was the only neighbor that showed up. He was not in favor of the project. He had several reasons. I'd like to emphasize that I'm sure you here on Commission get a lot of neighborhood opposition on many different things, and that, you know, sometimes it's just a matter of agreeing to disagree. Sometimes it's a case of, I don't want issues in my backyard. And if it's, what we like to focus on is the fact that this is a commercial property, and we are going to be developing various uses if it, with regards to the height, we've limited the height. It could be a two-story apartment building or a two-story office building. The line of sights are going to be an issue no matter what the use is. So just because it's renters, we don't want to be, our use to be discriminated on because it's people that are renting versus people that might be working in an office building. But what we can do is we can work really closely with staff. We can work with the neighbors to design the project to mitigate concerns. With regards to line of sight, we've limited the height of the buildings to limit them to two-story and not three-story. We've created a very large buffer. We've got a 30-foot landscape buffer, and then we've got a setback of 100 feet. Most of the buildings are more than that before separating from the adjacent property. And we've prepared a line of sight exhibit that's in your book. If you're standing on the second floor balconies and you look out, you're either going to see a couple of things. You're going to see the single-story garages, which are 12 feet tall. You're not going to be able to see over them into the yard. If you're in a position where you don't have a garage in front of you, you're going to see an eight-foot wall, which is already there, and you're not going to be able to see beyond that. If you continue the line of sight, we looked at all the homes. The minimum setback is 15 feet, but we also took some of the homes aren't as deep, and we moved them to 30 feet further back. And we ran that line of sight all the way to the house. It's going to be a maximum of 6'8", so you're going to see basically the fascia board at the very top. It's not like these homes are going to be looking down into people's backyards. In addition, we planted staggered rows of trees all along the property boundary. So in a matter of a couple of years, all you're going to see is trees regardless. You're not going to be able to see the buildings. So they're not going to be looking at the buildings. The people in the units aren't going to be looking down at them. And I'd like to emphasize that regardless of it, multifamily residential or another commercial use, which is already zoned for, you're going to have the same issues. It's really a site planning issue, and we ask that, you know, you allow us to continue to work with staff and work with the neighbors to, you know, mitigate those concerns through good design. Regarding traffic, there was a concern that the multifamily use would generate excess traffic. We do have a traffic impact analysis that was prepared. It compares the difference between the last use, which had office and hotel, with, and now it's all multifamily in those locations. The traffic impact shows a 21 percent reduction in the amount of traffic generated. So I would just like to emphasize the fact that the current zoning is all commercial, but because we're providing some of it as residential, there's been actually a decrease in the amount of traffic projections, and that's been submitted to staff, reviewed by city traffic engineer, and obtained approval. Regarding the water demands, with any project, we're going to have to provide, you know, engineered plans, water reports. If any reason we do not meet or exceed those requirements, we're going to have to do booster pumps, anything to meet those fire flow projections. I'd like to emphasize that the fire flow projections are above and beyond what's required for regular domestic use. The fire department has very strict standards, and before any CFOs are issued, we're going to have to meet those fire flow projections that are above and beyond what it's going to take for just your standard domestic use. So if there's concerns that water pressure when the showers are running in the morning, whether it's multifamily or commercial use, whatever gets built here, we're going to have to meet or exceed all those standards. The last thing I'd like to just highlight on the project, there was, in the previous staff report, there was just a concern that the project might cause a negative economic impact, or was, you know, that the rental units might have a negative economic impact to the city's bottom line. Just like to confirm, we did an analysis of the fees that are going to be generated as part of this project. It includes the buy-in fees for the, we're going to be reimbursing buy-in fees for the Van Buren roadway improvements. We have impact fees, water meter fees, construction sales tax, retail sales tax. On apartments, there's also rental sales tax that are applied, wherein, single-family, there's not that revenue. There's going to be, during the construction phase of the project, there's anticipated over $4 million of revenue that's going to be coming in to the city as part of that. The projected annual revenues based on the, you know, sales tax, restaurant sales tax, and rental sales tax is over $650,000 annually. And during construction, we're estimating between 400 and 450 jobs created, construction jobs, with over 100 jobs, permanent jobs of retail and service ongoing. So these are all people that are going to be buying homes, shopping, living, working right here in Goodyear. It's going to further support the goals and the intentions of the gateway overlay area at the city center plan, and we are committed to working with staff and the neighborhood on all the design issues that are in front of us. We feel that we've really tried to put our best foot forward with our initial design. We've met with the neighbors. We've had two neighborhood meetings. We've, I've sent additional correspondence. I have not received any additional feedback on it, and, but I do want to commit that my client and staff has been very accommodating. We're willing to continue the dialogue as we move forward with the additional stages, whether it be site plan, special use permit. And I just ask that you grant us a favorable recommendation to move forward to the next steps, and just to reassure you that you are going to see this project again. There are special use permits. We've got to get design review, site plan, planning. There are 18 to 24 months of approvals, and this is just one of the first steps in that process. So we're committed to see the project through, to make it a quality project, and ask for your support. This time, I'll be available for any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sumner. Any questions from the Commission for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate, you know, you taking the time to address some of the concerns that we had from the last meeting. And I know that there are at least two people who have signed up. Mr. McLaughlin?
Hi.
And again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening to the Commissioners. My name is James McLaughlin. I live at 182 North 153rd Avenue in Goodyear. I guess my first question is, to the gentleman who was just speaking, he mentioned that on his last statement, there was a meeting with the neighbors. I'm not aware of, I'm not heard of, of a meeting. So if there was a meeting with the neighborhood, apparently it was held in a secret location that we were not made aware.
And maybe Mr. Sumner can address that, but what I took from his comments was that there were two prior neighborhood meetings that occurred. You know, this was even prior to our last Commission meeting, and I, as to whether or not those took place, I don't know.
No. There was meeting prior to your last Commissioner's meeting. That meeting was when they were to go with the commercial site. There was notices sent out, but there was never a meeting with the developers. I personally have received communications from them only because I have spoken to you and to them, but the rest of the residents, there has never been anything sent out. So that's one of the things he said that is not there. Number two, when he, when they first came forward with this proposal for a commercial site, the zone and the whole thing, the 32.2 acres commercially, you didn't have the opposition from the community that you're getting now. The community is not opposed to progress. What we're opposed to, we don't think that we need or require, and if you look at, two weeks ago in the Republic, Arizona Republic, it stated the apartment market. It shows that we are flooded- It shows that we are flooded with apartments. Why is it all of a sudden that here in Goodyear, we need apartments? Now, his statistics on Serafina and Luna Apartments, which is a part of my association, the numbers are not accurate. I know this because I am the treasurer of the community for the association here. I know what the vacancy rate is. It's, those are some of the things. Number two, no one has addressed the fact that if we put in multifamily apartments, we have a school right now that is totally, totally flooded. Where are we going to put them? We're not, we're not set for that. There's no room to enlarge the school. We're already busing people from our schools to Desert Sky and Wildflower. So how is that going to help us? That's one of the things. The, they're talking about the garages. If you stagger the garages with open space and a garage, open space and garage, it's defeating everything that we're trying to preserve there to give the community some privacy. I have not spoken to any police officers or the associations to know exactly how they feel about it. But I know how the residents feel and I know how it feel. And I'm not speaking as from my own personal view. I'm speaking for how it's going to affect the community. So I don't see why we can't have the garages because it will buffer the noise. The trees that they are going to plant, yeah, they're going to grow, three, four, five years. So what do we do until then? We have nothing. The, the second thing is, you're, the, the traffic. Centerra Boulevard is not or was not designed for the traffic. If you put in residential, we're going to have people going and come in twenty-four seven. If it is a business that's put in, they're only open so many hours. There are peaked hours that the traffic will flow. If it's residential, it's a twenty-four seven flow. People are coming and going all hours, day and night. So that is some of our concerns there. And with that, I'm going to say I thank you. I appreciate you allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Does any member of the commission have a question?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Right, Chair.
You mentioned that you're the treasurer of the association.
Yes, Centerra Home Owners Association.
I mentioned that, and thanks for coming out, by the way. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You mentioned the, you know what the vacancy rate or the occupancy rate is?
Yes, yes.
We heard several numbers at the last meeting. What do you think they are based on your?
Well, the last time, I don't have an accurate number with me tonight because I didn't have, I wasn't aware that I was going to need them. But it is considerably lower than what was stated. The last time I mentioned the vacancy rate, I overestimated, said that it was higher than what it actually was. It is considerably lower. From personally, and that's not a good one to use, but it's somewhere around probably forty-eight, fifty-two. Fifty-two being vacant, forty-eight percent being occupied. I base this on the fact from knowing the community and working with the managers of the two complexes. And plus I do a five-day walk-through. I walk that area five days a week, Monday through Friday. I have a chance to see as the traffic comes and goes, I can, you can also judge vacancy by the number of parking spaces, where they're parked, what's full and what is not. And the numbers are not there for what was stated.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. Bottom line, Mr. McLaughlin, what is it, do, am I hearing it correctly? You are approving, you like everything about the plan with the exception of the multifamily residences.
That is correct.
Everything else meets to your approval and your neighbor's approval.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I have Jacqueline McLaughlin. Okay, also if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Jacqueline McLaughlin, one eight-two North One Five-three Avenue, Goodyear, Arizona. I'm Jim's wife. Let me tell you about this from a family perspective. Jim is eighty years old. This was our retirement investment in this home. If we had wanted to live in an apartment community, we could have moved into an apartment and saved a whole pile of money. We don't want to live in an apartment community. We didn't want to live in one then. We haven't lived in one for thirty years before that. We had no intention of moving and buying another home. At this age, we're no longer physically able to move ourselves. We would have to hire someone to move us. Now, now, what are we supposed to do? And our neighbors who are here tonight are also either all retired or single retired people. We, you know, this is our lifestyle. If you're going to put apartments behind us, there's going to be noise twenty-four seven. There's going to be noise. There's nothing you can do about it. They're talking about going vertical right now. They're saying two-story apartments behind our homes. They're talking about vertical. They're saying maybe the builder we have will sell that out and somebody else will build there. Then what's going to happen? It's going to be a mess. It's going to be a mess. I don't know what's going to happen there. And I reiterate about our school problem. That's already a major issue. So what are we going to do with all these kids that are going to live there? And are we going to build apartments all the way down the other side of Estraya Two, all the way down to the ballpark on the empty properties? Is it going to be like apartment alley to drive down Estraya? If you have medical buildings, which is what they said they were going to put in there in the beginning, you're going to have Monday through Friday business hour traffic. Maybe some of them are going to be open a few hours on Saturday. But it's not going to be twenty-four seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. All right. Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this case? Do we have any commission comments or discussion?
I have a question. I have a question of staff. In the last, I guess, four years, we've approved, have we not, for multifamily residents at Pebble Creek and McDowell? Is that not correct?
We have had a couple of requests for multifamily rezonings. There was one behind Lifetime Fitness.
Correct.
And there was another one, although, I'm not sure that one was a rezoning from commercial to multifamily as it was an increase in density. Wasn't that one?
Right. So in essence, multifamily residences on Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell and behind Lifetime Fitness that we have approved already. Is that correct? Am I?
You had approved them from the standpoint that they had come in for modifications of their P A Ds.
To have, okay, but the bottom line is that they want to build multifamily residences, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this, you know, this is a very difficult decision for me because I'm sensitive to, you know, all the parties involved. But I think our job is to look at land uses. And I think that this land use makes sense. You know, and I think that the developers are also putting a lot of work and effort and thought into being sensitive to the residents and working with staff to ensure that, you know, what they're doing won't negatively impact them. You know, and I appreciate all the comments and everybody participating. But for me, I support the project.
I disagree with Commissioner Peters. I think that residents buy, spend, this is their, this is their investment. And we as a commissioner, yes, we deal with land uses, but how it benefits the community. And these residents live in the community of Goodyear. I think it was a wonderful job that Mr. Sumner did. Apparently, they like everything with the exception of the multifamily residences. I don't see this great need for multifamily residences at this time, given that we already approved two and they haven't broken ground yet. So I will be voting against this measure.
Commissioner Short?
I also appreciate the concerns of the residents in the surrounding areas. And I appreciate the effort they made to come and share their thoughts with us. But it also sounds to me like there is a willingness with this applicant to work with those residents to try to allay those concerns. And I have to, I think, focus in especially on two things. One, if we can bring more residential areas into our city center and city gateway center, that really does, I think, speak positively towards our ability to have a vibrant city center when the time comes. The other thing that occurs to me is that there's been considerable speculation that as zoned totally commercial, what might be on that area would be a hotel. And it seems to me that that would be significantly less desirable to the neighbors than two-story residential multi-housing. So I will support it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chair.
I agree with Commissioner Peters that it's an appropriate land use for the area there. My hesitation, though, and concern is when this applicant purchased this property, you know, nobody has a crystal ball. And when they purchased this property, they purchased it for a commercial use. And since then, the real estate markets tanked even further. And, you know, they were here, I asked the question at the last month's meeting to staff. They were here for the special use permit or whatever it was for the gas station. And then that went by the wayside. And my fear is, is that, that because nobody has a crystal ball, and they may have the, they, I have no doubt they have the wherewithal to build this project. But my fear is, two years, three years, five years come down the road and something better comes along, we're going to be back here addressing this issue again. That's my main concern.
Thank you. And my comments are this. I, one thing that Mrs. McLaughlin said really struck with me. And I think over my tenure on the commission, I have tried really hard to keep Estraya Parkway something to be the jewel of the city. And I have been consistently disappointed in some of the decisions that have been made with regard to zoning and land uses along Estraya Parkway. And so I remain concerned that we continue to, you know, sort of in our rush for either rooftops or general fund money, that we may compromise our principles and what that particular main part of the city was, was, at least to some of us, designed to be, again, the jewel of the city. And it is turning out not to be that way. However, you know, in that regard, I'm really torn on this project because, you know, I understand that those who purchase property, you know, maintain some property rights and have within reason the right to, you know, make a project viable in order to recoup their investment. And so, you know, I am having a difficult time, whereas I would, I would love to just say, you know, no. I am having a very difficult time logically saying so. And, but, you know, again, I appreciate the residents and your concerns. And I hope that you continue to express those as these, as this project moves along and others that come along Estraya Parkway, you know, that don't meet with your approval. Because your input is, I think, valuable. At least it is to our commission. And I know that it is to council as well. So with that, I am going to close the public hearing and request commission action. Mr. Chairman, I move case.
I'm sorry. Could I say a couple of things first?
See, the face time. I knew it.
Well, I have to reiterate, you know, that Harvey has pointed out once again, a mistake I've made. Remember it the last time, at the last meeting, that I left out the reference to the Centerra Development Agreement that dealt with the traffic signal? So if we could, on stipulation number eighteen, please, just at the end of that, add pursuant to the existing Centerra Development Agreement. Then if we could add in a completely new one, and these are all Harvey's words, so hold on. Per the Centerra Development Agreement dated, and I'll fill in the blank, between the city of Goodyear and, I'll fill in the blank, the current owner, developer of the property, Centerra Crossings, is required to comply with the terms and conditions of said agreement. As such, the owner, developer, shall pay its share of the traffic signal at Estraya Parkway and Centerra Drive and meet any other obligations included in this agreement prior to the issuance of any horizontal or vertical construction permits. If we could add that in, I'd appreciate that. And then also I did want to clarify something in terms of meetings held with adjacent residents. I'm only aware of the citizen review meeting that was held prior to your last meeting. And I believe that's, that's the only one that was held. And that's the one the applicant was referring to. And then also just a reminder tonight that if you're going to vote on this, it requires four affirmative votes to pass. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about how you want to move to the two different case numbers.
We'll do them. Yes, we'll do them. Right. It requires two separate actions. So we will take case zero nine dash two zero zero dash zero 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 one first.
Mr. Chairman, I move case zero nine dash two zero 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 one with the stipulations and changes that Karen outlined.
My second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
My, or, is three ayes and two nays whereby you have failed to recommend approval of case zero nine dash two zero zero dash zero 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 one. My understanding is it will still pass along to council as we are just a recommending body. And it will, the record will show that commission recommendation was not there. I will take then the next case.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case zero nine six three zero 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 three.
Right. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
By your same vote of three ayes and two nays, you have failed to grant approval of case zero nine dash six three zero dash zero 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 three. And there is no new business. Staff communications.
Chairman, I don't have anything to report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Harvey. Aside being thrown under the bus by Karen, being overly wordy.
Got to take the chance when you can.
Okay. Any other business? Oh, I do want to ask about the prison.
And hopefully all of those people who are leaving will be back on Monday. Monday. Monday at six, all of you. Great.
The city council on Monday evening, the twenty-second, will be considering resolutions in opposition to the prison expansion at Perryville. So that's on the agenda, I believe, for the twenty-second.
Okay, so the agenda is for them to oppose it then? Is that my understanding? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. If in fact, I mean, again, I know that there are a lot of variables here involving, you know, state contracts and, you know, every, everything else. But if in fact this particular operator of prison expansion were to be selected, particular operator of prison expansion were to be selected and, and, you know, given the go-ahead, does that come before us? I mean.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, the opposition would be to the expansion of the prison, whether, you know, private, no matter who the operator is. We've, we've determined that, you know, subject to Legals, further research and interpretation, that it wouldn't be subject to our zoning requirements.
What?
Well, Legal still, is still debating that and researching that, so we're, we're, we, we still haven't, it's not conclusive, but we're looking, it's, it's not likely that will come before you.
Okay.
At this point in time. I'm sorry, you want to have him address that, I didn't hear what he said.
Um, I, I think the question was, i- is the actual expansion located in the city or in the, the planning area?
The, the property in question is property that's owned by the state land trust, state Department of Land, it's state trust land, and they lease the property to the Department of Corrections. Much like, we are creatures of the state, much like the states are creatures of the federal government. And typically, when the state builds buildings in the, in the city of Goodyear, we can apply certain requirements, like our fire mar, the state Fire Marshal's offices delegate those responsibilities to the state. But typically, they do not look at applying zoning to, to our development, to projects that are controlled by the state, if it's under their purview. In other words, if the state is performing a function that they typically do, then they wouldn't apply, we wouldn't apply zoning. But if it's outside their purview, say it's state land and they want to build a resort or a golf course, then we would, we could apply our zoning. But typically, if it's a, a typical use that a state does, then they'll take the position that zoning doesn't apply. However, our city attorney's office may challenge that, and I, I'm not, I don't know whether we're going to challenge that or not.
And, and again, the property in question is within the city?
The property is, the property, I'm sorry, the property is within the corporate limits of the city of Goodyear.
Okay.
The prison was built in 1980. It's been, it was initially the, I think initially it was capped at about 1,400 beds. It's now over 4,000 beds, predominantly, I think, female prison. It used, it used to be male, and it was female and male, and now it's, it's predominantly female. And I think the expansion would be add male prisoners. It's a medium security prison, and it's on three sections of land, two, one, one of which is where the prison's located, and then two are a buffer land around the prison.
Thanks, Harvey. Any other questions, anything for the good of the order? Otherwise? Mission.